I'd like to call this Celine City Council meeting to order if you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marle, councilmembers Girbaugh, CEO, McClellan, Mitchell, Mayor Protam Tahaar, and Councilman Dillon. From city staff, we have city manager Campout, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett, I believe, is here, Police Chief Hart, City Superintendent Engineer Ruble, DPW Director Fordice, Mr. Scholl is also here, as well as Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, and City Labor Council Steve Gerard. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, we welcome you and we would encourage you to sign in in the back to my left. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. I've been made aware that old business items 18-38, 18-39, and 18-40 have some deficiencies and inconsistencies, and it would be, it would not be prudent to vote on those. I've been notified by staff that they would appear as action items at our next council meeting on April the 2nd. Are there additional changes to the agenda tonight?
I'm sorry, point of information, I don't have an updated agenda. I didn't understand there was an amendment.
Well, we'd just be removing old business from the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. You have it there?
It's right here. Yeah, excellent.
Very good. Is there a motion then to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Approved by Tahaar, seconded by Girbaugh. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll proceed to the first and only presentation, which is the annual environmental, the commission, the Environmental Commission Annual Report, excuse me. And I believe we have several environmental commissioners here this evening, but our environmental chair Luke Smirberg is going to be taking the lead on this. Luke, we welcome you and invite you to the podium, and as soon as you're ready to present, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. So I would like to start by recognizing the members of the Environmental Commission that are here. There is 2017 Chairperson Dennis Kittle. We have myself, the vice chairperson for 2017, and the current chair for 2018. We have Mayor Protam Tahaar, our city council representative, and our staff liaison Bob Scholl. In addition, we have Member Liz Hilgrin and Member Bruce Westlake, who are, oh, Bruce switched sides on me, so there he is. So, getting going on this here, and here is the list of the members of the Environmental Commission for the year 2017. The membership stayed the same into 2018 with just a couple changes of who's going to be in charge of what, which we'll get to. So some of the key statistics and activities about what happened on the Environmental Commission last year. This is the recycling report. When we'd had the work meeting just a little bit ago, this was something that we were looking at, and you can see that the 2015 number matches up with the numbers provided by the county waste management plan for that year. So, total material collected in 2017 did increase, and as a result, we, as a result of some factors that I think were outside of our control, specifically with the material recovery facility on Platt Road out there for the city of Ann Arbor, having some issues that were, again, certainly beyond our control. Some of the material that was going there is now being diverted, and if we go to the next slide, we can see some of the tonnage trends, and particularly the diversion rate trend on the bottom there. The big dip last year can, as it's my understanding, it can be credited to the issues with the material recovery facility, and also just market forces that make certain materials more or less profitable to recycle or landfill at various times. And coming off of the work session where we had a discussion of the county solid waste plan, I just wanted to point out a little bit about where we are in comparison to the county. County diversion rate in 2015, again, coming out of that report from the county, was 33%. So at 2015, we had a 41.5%, so we were at a higher diversion rate than the county average, and certainly higher than the 14.5% statewide average that we were informed of at work session. Now, the solid waste plan that the county is looking at has some goals going forward of a 38% diversion rate in 2022, which we are almost at, at 37.4, and 43% in 2027, which would be getting back to our high point, and maybe a little bit more. But just as an example of kind of a stretch goal, you might call it, or something that we could possibly look forward to, the city of Seattle diverts 58.8% of their waste in 2018. And obviously, circumstances are different in economics and culture, but we can get above 50% or at the very least get back to where we were, and hopefully meet those goals that the county has been setting of the 38 and 43. This is something that took me a little bit by surprise when I looked at the numbers here, and this is how much trash each and every Celine City resident generates. And that's 790 pounds. So 790 pounds per resident each year of that, 210 pounds is recycled, so that's 580 pounds of landfill trash per individual. So that's something that I think we should just keep in mind, as, again, we heard with the work session, the reduce, as well as the reuse and recycle portion of how to minimize the amount of waste that's going into landfills. One of the things that we have in addition to the regular waste diversion is a partnership with a group, Simple Recycling. This started back in 2015, where the bags were handed out to residents, and you can bag of textiles and other sorts of household, and basically anything that's fabric, put it out in the curb, and it gets taken away to be processed. You can see the curve in year 2017, where it kind of tracks pretty nicely with spring cleaning, where it starts to go up in March, April, and May, and then taper off later in the summer. But our numbers here, 23,458 pounds were collected in the city of Celine in 2017. That's an increase of almost 5%. Nearly 3,000 households participated in the Simple Recycling program, averaging about a ton a month. Now, the regional ranking in the region is not just Ann Arbor, but the Detroit, sort of southeast Michigan area, where one of the better communities for Simple Recycling participation, at ranking seven out of 26. And also, I understood from council, there were some questions about what happens with this stuff when Simple Recycling collects it. The idea is that the top, it gets divided into the top tier, mid-tier, and then less usable tiers. And the numbers I'm going to provide here are from Simple Recycling, and I'll be the first to admit, they don't add up to 100%, but that's unfortunately, I wish I could take the credit or blame for this math, but it's Simple Recycling's math. They say that approximately anywhere from 10% to 20% is top tier, that gets distributed to local or regional thrift stores and other resale outlets. The mid-tier, 45%, 40 to 45% is taken to international markets and sold and distributed overseas. Then there's 30% that's processed into essentially rags, stuff that is used for cleanup, and then about 20% is just unusable, processed and pulped for raw materials. So that does come up to a slightly more than 100% number, but that's what happens to the stuff that goes into the Simple Recycling bags. And I can also say from personal experience that it's not just stuff that goes in the bags, they also have Simple Recycling stickers, and they will take furniture. They took a recliner that had been in my garage for a very long time, put the sticker on it, and took it away, and they processed that. And that probably was a good portion of the one ton per month that was collected that one month. In addition to the regular collection, we have a diversion event, the Spring E-Waste Collection Day. This was, take, this took place back on April 29th of last year. Had a record level of participation, 403 cars. And also, if you take out the CRT televisions that are very difficult to process and find a way to separate the leaded and unleaded glass, it's the best that we've ever had. We collected CRTs in 2014, and you can see from the number there, there were 34,000 pounds with CRTs accepted, but over 14,000 pounds of that was CRTs. So that was less than 20,000 pounds of non-CRT waste in 2014, and last year, we did 27,000 pounds of non-CRT waste. And as part of the partnership that we had with GEAP, Global Electronic, Electric, I think it's Electric Electronics Partners Processing Systems, they had no cost to us for this event. We're currently working on the 2018 event, and I'll get to that a little bit more once we get to the 2018 activities. Another activity that a lot of people attended was the County Cleanup Day out at the Teft Court location for DPW. This is where we take in e-waste. You can see that from this that there were almost 32,000 pounds of e-waste collected at that day, in addition to our Spring E-Waste Day, almost 40,000 pounds of household hazardous waste, such as paints and any sort of old pesticides, et cetera, 11,000 pounds of scrap metal, 350 tires, 49 freon appliances, and we collected $6,000 in donations to help cover some of the costs. Now, this was, we had 530 participants come through, and we are looking at alternative sites for the coming year, because as anybody that was there could tell you, we had cars lined up at the beginning before the event opened, they were there a half hour early, and it went on with a line throughout the day. So I definitely thank the city police for coming and arranging a traffic system that worked in the moment, but we're hoping to find possibly a different location where we can have more easy in and out traffic, but I am in contact with the Solid Waste Department, and we're working on that. Some of the other 2017 activities where the Environmental Commission was involved, we had the Red Barrel, and this is a drop box in the lobby that walked past when you come in here to collect prescription medication. And the collection has stayed pretty consistent in the high 200, low 300 pounds for the past several years. There's recycle containers right in the lobby and City Hall for things like cell phones and batteries. And the main collection focus is, you know, just batteries, batteries are very successful. There's a weekly container pickup, every, sorry, every week, the container gets filled to the brim. The cellphone collection, we have, we sent two full boxes of old cell phones to be completed and recycled, they're distributed to members of the armed service and veterans, and that's about the same amount we had last year. And for the third year in a row, we had holiday light recycling. We recycled 200, and, sorry, 740 pounds of lights, so that's an increase. It used to be able to, we used to be able to take them to Lowe's and Home Depot, and I want to thank Dennis Kittle, the member of the Environmental Commission, who for the past two years would stop by, load all the lights into his car, and then take them to Lowe's or Home Depot. But they stopped doing that collection for unexplained reasons this year. Fortunately, there is a company out of New Berlin, Wisconsin, that collects these lights, and it turns out, one of the people that works for them lives in Brooklyn, Michigan. So, we were able to overcome the loss of the Lowe's and Home Depot collection with a partnership of our own. Another activity we did was at Summerfest. We had a recycle game, and you can see the picture in the lower right here, this is something that's popular with the kids, that you get to pick up different plastic items and sort them into bins to see just exactly what recycle number is on them. We had much greater success this year keeping people from throwing away garbage into the bins, which was, which was nice compared to last year, where we were picking up some people's coffee cups and such. And in addition, we had a potting activity, where we offered kids the chance to put some seeds into a biodegradable or a pot that you just put right into the ground, and we offered three local plants, native plants, cone flowers, blanket flowers, and coreopsis. And that was very popular, we ran out of dirt and seeds and pots and just about everything. And when we did our, when we did our participation at the farmer's market, at one of the farmer's markets, that, later that fall, we used up some of the last of our pots and seeds to hand out to kids that would come to farmer's markets and take some plants home with them. One of our activities in 2017 as well was to put these indicators, no dumping, drains to river, on the drains around town. This was spearheaded by Liz Hilgrin, and these events, sorry, these, this event was to go around and just put some of these, glue them down, because the snowplows take them right off. So that's something that we keep an eye on, we're trying to identify neighborhoods where we can put these out on a, year-by-year basis, as we see that they're starting to go away. 2017 was our second year to do the Environmental Recognition Award. We handed out four awards here, well, one of them, there were a lot of awards handed out, but one was for the 17-acre classroom, and these are some 7th grade science teachers that were involved in doing some citizen science with kids down at the Leslie Kehammer Preserve. The next one was the Woodland Meadows Elementary School Trash Club, and this is a group of a bunch of kids who started this project when they started seeing trash on their way to school and in the playground. So they came to the school, sought out assistance to get bags, gloves, et cetera, and now are trying to create this legacy of the Trash Club at Woodland Meadows. Michael Erickson, who's a teacher at Heritage School, he's been very instrumental in heading up recycling efforts at that particular facility, is someone who is recognized. And also, McNaughton &amp; Gunn is a business that does, does printing, and they are more environmentally friendly compared to other printers, and particularly using Forest Stewardship Council certified paper, and so we've recognized their efforts for sustainability as well. In 2017, we got information out to the citizens through a bunch of different formats, we put an article, at least one article, into the FYI newsletter that went out with the water bills. And then we have our own blog on the post, where we have different things to remind folks about wrapping paper recycling. Coming up, there's drain markers, lawn care, things like that, to just get people things that are a little bit quicker hits that don't go into FYI. We also have some public service announcements in rotation on Channel 18 and at the ACTN website for people that want to take a look at some of the things that's going on. And then we also have our own website and a Facebook page, where we get information out about, you know, relevant news and any sort of things that we think should, you know, be, items of discussion relating to the environment. So moving on to 2018, the 2018 Environmental Commission is the same here, we've got myself, Tom, Linda, Bob, Amy, who is now going to, Chris Schonk is going to be working with us for our city staff liaison, Liz, Dennis, Jessica, and Bruce. So the only changes were Tom and I got promoted and Dennis retired, not retired from the committee, but retired as chairperson, and otherwise, everything stayed the same. So some of the events that we have planned for 2018, County Cleanup Day, we are again looking at possible, a possible new location, talking with Jonathan at the Washtenaw County Solid Waste to see what we can do there. We still are, we have a tentative day for the e-waste, but that is, again, still a tentative day. The collector that we had worked with was a collector and a processor, and now they're just a processor. So we're working on making sure we can bridge that gap between people dropping the e-waste off at City Hall and getting it to the facility. The drain markers, we're still evaluating which neighborhoods need them when the plows have finished scraping everything up. The awards are still ongoing, this will be our third year, and we're really happy to see that the nominations keep coming in. We're going to be back at Summerfest, again, with the planting activity, and now that we know how popular the plants are, I think we'll be a little more prepared for that. And something that is a goal of ours that we're looking at is Oktoberfest being a zero-waste event, and partnering with Washtenaw County to make it a zero-waste event. So we've looked into the possibility of either subsidizing or encouraging gently the vendors to bring compostable materials, with the possibility of, in the future, looking at requiring compostable materials. But that's not something we felt we could just drop on people out of nowhere, so we're trying to ramp up to that. Some of the events we have, a tentative date for the e-waste collection, we had a presence at the volunteer fair, zero-waste event, that's something that, you know, we're going to be really looking for at Oktoberfest, and hopefully really focusing on that. We set, we have our information tent, you can see that at the farmer's market, we're there once a month, but the tent's there, I think, every week. And the Summerfest, where we have the native plantings. Something new that we're doing is going to be a shredding event, we're working on getting that set up, but it's looking like it's going to be happening middle of the summer, June 23rd, with all shred, and that is going to be a place where city residents can bring material to be shredded securely and then recycled, and that's going to be sponsored, and there will be no cost to the city for that event. And one last thing to mention on the zero-waste, I mentioned a stretch goal, or something to look for of a diversion rate. At the most recent Super Bowl, they had a 91% diversion rate at the Zero Waste Super Bowl. So for an event of that size, they can get 91%, I think we can do a pretty good job at our Oktoberfest. So that is what the Environmental Commission has been up to, and what it looks like we're going to be going toward, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Luke, that was, was very thorough, and we appreciate the attendance of your colleagues on the Environmental Commission as well. Are there questions or comments for our Environmental Commission chair? Very good. Luke, thank you very much. Pleasant evening. Okay, friends, we come now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments?
Good evening, everyone, I'm Jill Durnan from the Celine Main Street Board.
And I'm Holly Andrews, and I'm the director of Celine Main Street, and I live across the street as well.
And I want to apologize for our attire, our annual party is tonight, and we have a rock star theme, because all our volunteers are rock stars. So we're wearing ripped jeans and things like that. We are here tonight in support of the parking study that the city is in, is embarking on, Celine Main Street, it has created a statement, which I believe Terry Royal was able to print and hand out to you this evening, just showing that we are very committed to this study, we're happy that you're, that you're going through this paces, and we're more than willing to help any way we can, being the liaison between the city and the downtown business owners, gathering data, once the study is done, spreading the data, and getting everyone on the same page. So I just wanted to let you know that we're in full support of the, of the parking study that's coming up later on the agenda. Anything yet?
No, this is in my wheelhouse, I love parking reform, and I know that the businesses are very excited about this study. And so, thank you so much for embarking on it, and I'm looking forward to getting to know, working with you, and working with the businesses.
Very good. Thank you, ladies, appreciate your time. Additional citizen comments on agenda items?
Mary Hess, and mine also is on the 1853 parking study. I read the background, and as far as the, the team that's being proposed is marvelous. He has done an excellent job as far as presentation. But on page four, I noticed we have project team, and we have teamwork. Now, if you notice, there's city of Celine, and then the project manager, and then the planner. And over here, there's three areas of the team. There's downtown merchants, business owners, and then property owners. Down here is community, but there's no line to community, and that's on page four. And I think community is very important. I was on city council for a lot of these parking lots, and to go on, the last time we had a study, I think they were doing Main Street. And right now, we have Smokehouse 52, that I drive through the parking lot, Parking Lot Four, and the small car takes about 15 parking spaces, sometimes more every day, because they have the dumpster in front, that's about three parking lots on 12. And then if you go through Parking Lot Four, there's all of the vans that are working on the Smokehouse 54. They hope to be open earlier, I know, but they had a bad leakage problem, and had to repair all, replace everything and wall and everything else. This project is proposed to start 4/16. I would think that until Smokehouse is finished, and all the employees or the people setting up the, the items for the restaurant, because we have no idea how many parking spaces are being used, then it would be a better study to do, and I don't think it's going to be ready to go by 4/16. Also, the apartments above 50, Smokehouse 52 or whatever, they are going to have to have parking for their apartments uptown. I want very much, as a taxpayer, to know who is providing the parking spaces for the apartments above Smokehouse 50. I figure that it looks like they're going to be taking up about 10 parking spaces. The other thing is, as far as, I would hope that you would have people from the community also on this team program, because there are many things, and as I said, I hope, I'm done, okay?
Thank you, Mrs. Hess.
But I do want to have, who's going to pay for the parking, provide the parking?
Are there additional citizen comments on agenda items? Thank you all, then we'll proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for discussion.
Yes, I'd like to remove one item. C-18-46.
So that will become the first business item under new business. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Moved by Dillon, seconded, was that Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to public hearing, 18-47, this is DNR Land and Water Conservation Grant. The first motion will be a motion to open the public hearing at 7:58 PM.
So moved.
Moved by Girbaugh, seconded by, was that McClellan?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. All those in favor of opening the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the public hearing is now open, and anyone who would like to speak to this matter is welcome to come to the podium.
Move to close?
Moved by McClellan to close the public hea, I'm sorry, no, Mrs. Hess, please.
I think it's a great idea, because Celine, of course, is named after the Salt Springs, which is being proposed, and I think it is a wonderful thing for the history of Celine, and also to be able to look at what's going on down there. And, of course, Mr. Peters has been our best salesman as far as what was going on a couple years ago.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess, are there additional comments? Then I think there was a motion moved by McClellan, I didn't get the second, who would like to close?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, public hearing is closed at 7:59 PM. The third motion will be a motion to acknowledge received the March 14, 2018 memo from Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, and to approve or not to approve Resolution Number 18-47, and authorize or not authorize city staff to apply for a DNR Land and Water Conservation Fund LWCF grant for Salt Springs Park in Celine.
Move to acknowledge, approve, and authorize.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh, seconded by Councilmember CEO. Director Scruggs, would you care to make any comment at this time?
So these are some formalities we have to go through in order to apply for the DNR Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. I do appreciate the, the public hearing and some of the comments. I agree, this is a great grant to apply for. Salt Springs is, is, you know, Celine was, is the salt city, whatnot, and so, once we have approval, actually tomorrow evening, at our park commission meeting, we're going to hold another public hearing, in case there's some other people that couldn't make it tonight to give some input or whatnot. All of these things will be compiled, the resolution will be made, everything uploaded onto the, the grant site for the DNR, and our grant deadline is April 1st, so we're trying to kind of move through this process and, and get this applied for, so we can be considered for, for grant applicat, or for grant money.
Very good. Thank you for your work on this. I also want to acknowledge Park Commissioner Jim Peters, who's in the audience this evening, thank you for your advocacy and support as well. Are there questions for staff? No questions, thank you, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protam Tahaar.
Yes, thank you. So I, I observe, I note that the part of Phase One is the creation of the parking lot, and I know that there is, there is already a plan that's been laid out for this phase, and I can't remember, I apologize, whether the parking lot design includes water management, stormwater management, like berms and water gardens, permeable asphalt, or, or are we not at that level of detail yet? of detail yet? And secondarily, would that give us a good-looking proposal to the DNR if we included that sort of feature?
Gary, was that part of the design?
When it comes to actually submitting and finalizing a plan with the DNR through, I think, whatever consultant we hired to finish the plans and rebid it, we can certainly take a look at some of that. I think some of that was part of the parking lot already. The parking lot did have a little bit of a landscape on it.
Okay, so it's not completely finished or finalized at this point?
Yeah. I mean, you got a plan set forth for Phase One, was pretty much defined, but it did have some of those elements. But the remainder of it inside the park proper was a concept. And so certainly, elements can be enhanced at the time that those come up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Additional questions, Ms. Dylan?
Do you have any indication as to whether you're going to receive this grant?
No. Once we apply for it, they have a process. It's reviewed by all the grants coordinators, and it'll go through a scoring phase. Then it goes on to the DNR Director for Review. Essentially, we won't know until spring of 2019 whether we receive this grant or not.
So then, if you don't receive it, are you going to hold back our matching money and look for other grant opportunities? Or what is sort of your Plan B?
That would be up to the city, what you want to do with that, those funds. The DNR, the grant cycle is every April 1st of every year. So we probably would, I don't know if we would know by next year at April 1st whether we are receiving that or not.
Are there other opportunities for other grants?
Potentially. We would have to review that. I mean, maybe through the connecting communities, through Washtenaw County. If the DNR doesn't fall, falls through, maybe that money could go for a match through that organization or some other that might pop up.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Director Scruggs, thank you. Appreciate it. Any subsequent discussion on the motion? Mr. Girba.
Since I'm the one that kind of pushed for delaying the Salt Springs Park, I'm glad and very appreciative that you've moved forward on this grant, because I think this is really the support that we can do and help reduce some of the burden on our taxpayers in the city. One, and maybe this was a question, but not at this point, is there potential to phase this if we didn't receive the funding? Was it built that way, or is it pretty much $150,000 project only? I apologize.
This Phase One is for the parking lot and sidewalk entrance into the front gates, basically. Potentially, you could phase the parking lot and the sidewalk entrance.
Okay. Thank you.
We need subsequent discussion on the motion. It's been properly moved by Girba, seconded by Seo, to acknowledge receipt, to approve, and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move to new business item C-18-46. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 15, 2018 memo from City Manager Campbell regarding the wastewater treatment plant superintendent vacancy and to authorize the establishment of an interview committee consisting of Mayor Morrow, Wastewater Treatment Superintendent Skoll, DPW Director Fordes, City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, and City Manager Campbell.
I'll move to acknowledge the receipt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mitchell. Questions?
My only question, one of the things I've looked forward to, and one of the things since we did our non-discrimination ordinance is to make sure we have a mixture of gender on all of our search committees. Fortunately, on this one, we don't have representation. I think on the one for Catherine Skoll, we do have Miki Jo Bennett on that one. I didn't know if we could add one of our councilwomen to represent on to, in addition to the mayor, or potentially have one of our other city staff participate. I really feel that we need to be very inclusive when we do these type of reviews at this point in time.
Certainly, excuse me, happy to do that. My only logic was to, I should say only logic, but my logic was simply that the folks would interact more often than not with that position. And then you also have to balance having too large of a group, but certainly can, I'm happy to do that either way, whatever the council would like. Or one of the people that, another department head, for instance, that would interact with this position on a fairly regular basis would be our city treasurer.
Yeah, and that might be potentially that, if she could, or to have one of our members of city council be represented, because I know the mayor's one representative, but I would almost agree to have another city council.
Well, let's do this. If there are no objections from the dais, I would recommend proceeding with authorizing this body. And then in our next meeting, which is April the 2nd, between now and then, Mr. Campbell and I can discuss options and identify an individual who would be willing to serve in this capacity and make the additional appointment at that time.
Okay.
Is there anything further? Then there's been motion moved by Girba, seconded by Mitchell, to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. What about a motion now to authorize the establishment of an interview committee?
I'll move to make the motion to authorize the establishment with an additional position to represent either a department head or female councilwoman.
Okay. And I would add verbiage unless Mr. Girba objects to be appointed on April 2nd.
Correct.
The next regular meeting on April 2nd. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Taha. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. We move on to new business item 18-48. This is a series of two motions. These are administrative personnel changes. The first motion, Motion A, will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 20, 2018 memo from City Attorney Gerard, and to approve or not to approve the termination of employment agreements for all City of Celine deputies, directors, and department heads with existing employment agreements, with the exception of City Manager and the Chief of Police, effective midnight on June 30, 2018, and to continue the employment of these individuals on an indefinite basis pursuant to the personnel policy of the City of Celine as those policies are revised by city council from time to time.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Seo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. Labor Attorney Gerard, do you care to make any comment at this time? We welcome you here this evening. It's been a while, but we hope you're well, and we appreciate your work on this important and timely policy change.
Thank you. It's been a long winter, and I'm ready for it to end. So, thank you for having me here. The purpose for these documents, as you know, is we need to move forward on the next step of incorporating the ordinance number 795, which you adopted back in December of 2017. The purpose of the documents they have here before you are to, number one, to incorporate that ordinance into the personnel policies of the City of Celine. Number two, to delete the reference in the personnel policies to individual employment agreements, which is throughout that particular document. To, of course, terminate the individual employment agreements, making it very clear that we're not terminating individual employees, only those agreements, so that those employees can then continue on as employees of the city under the terms of the new employee handbooks and personnel policies. And then, of course, to incorporate, finally, the new severance policy that we have discussed at previous work sessions, to replace the severance agreement provision that is incorporated in the individual employment agreements. So that's the purpose of the document. If you have any questions, be glad to answer them.
Very good. We've discussed this issue at length on numerous occasions, and it was brought up as a discussion item at our last regular meeting. But are there any questions for our city labor council? Very good. Why don't you hang tight, Steve, in the event that there are questions for Motion B? Is there any discussion on the motion? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Seo, seconded by McClellan, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Motion B, a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 20, 2018 memo from City Attorney Gerard, and to approve or not to approve the changes to the personnel policies, Section 2.02 Employment Status, 7.01 Rules of Conduct, and 6.05 Severance Upon Termination as Submitted.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Seo. Was that seconded by Mayor Protem Taha?
Yes, it was.
Thank you, ma'am. Any additional comments?
No, I included that in my first comments. This document is indeed the changes to the personnel policy manuals that I previously discussed.
Very good. Questions for Labor Attorney Gerard? Councilmember Seo?
Two. First of all, I apologize for not being here last time. I was out of town. But I do have a couple of questions. Mr. Gerard?
Sure.
Is it possible to incorporate like a table that shows exactly how these weeks lay out year by year? I guess.
We could certainly do that.
If it's possible. I think that would help clarify.
For the severance payment?
Yes, please.
Yeah. I was trying to do the math myself, and essentially, how it works out is four weeks, then six weeks after two years. You have to be here 22 years to get the full 26 weeks of severance. But we could certainly do a table that would make that clear for everybody.
If your firm could do that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
If there's a separation mid-year, is it prorated?
It says, it specifically relates to, you have to complete a year of service.
All right. As long as that's clear.
Yep.
Additional questions?
No, thank you.
Additional question on the dais? Discussion on the motion. Mr. Girba.
I'm looking forward to this moving forward, because I think this is a way to modernize our employment processes and policies. So I appreciate all the work you've done. Thank you.
Additional discussion? Mayor Protem Taha.
Likewise, thank you very much for, not only for the final document, but walking us through the process. It was, it's uncharted territory for us, and thank you for your guidance.
You're welcome.
Additional discussion? Yes, Steve, thank you. This was, this was an issue, I think, that we initially discussed three or four years ago, and I--
2015, is when it started.
Yeah, I didn't want to give up on it, because I thought it was an important policy change. I thought the standard that we previously used was antiquated and a bit cumbersome. And I think this is a really positive development, and so I appreciate your work. But I also want to compliment my colleagues for their thoughtful consideration of this and the suggestions that they made during the lengthy discussion process that resulted in the drafting of these policies.
Yep, my pleasure. Thank you.
Very good. It's been properly moved by Seo, seconded by Mayor Protem Taha, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Steve, good evening.
Thank you.
We move on to new business item 18-49. This is fiscal year 19 operating and capital budgets for the Celine Area Fire Department. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 13, 2018 memo from City Treasurer Bennett regarding the Fire Department FYE 19 operating and capital budgets, and to approve or not to approve the proposed Celine Area Fire Department operating and capital improvement budgets for fiscal years 2018, 2019, in the total amount of $410,750, and to recommend that the Celine Fire Board adopt or not adopt said budgets.
Move to acknowledge, approve, and to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Girba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dylan. Memo was pretty straightforward. Ms. Bennett, do you care to make any additional comments? Not unless there are questions. Are there questions for either Ms. Bennett, or perhaps Ms. Dylan, or I could also address those as the liaisons to the Fire Board? We'll start with Councilwoman Mitchell. Why don't you come to the lectern, Treasurer Bennett? Please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just had a two-line item, questions reading over the budget. I'm looking at page two of your document, the item 206-910, schooling and training. Can you talk about the change in budget? For the audience, it goes down $2,000. So I wonder, Ms. Bennett, or councilmembers, do you have a--
This is the Celine Fire Department budget. This is what's presented to us from their Fire Board. I'm not involved in the discussion. I don't know if someone from the Fire Board and Council could--
I do not have that document line by line in front of me. I would be happy to take a look at it, discuss it with any member of council or any member of the public. Help me, Ms. Bennett, the line that she's referring to, it's an increase in training and schooling, is that correct?
Decrease.
A decrease, okay. Yeah, off the top of my head, I cannot address that. I'd be happy to get with you subsequent to the meeting, or facilitate a meeting with you and myself and the Fire Chief, but we can certainly get you clarification relating to that concern.
I'll hold my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Seo?
Under salaries and wages, they go up approximately 8% roughly?
I'm happy to, I'm able to address salary changes as well as benefits. So you may or may not recall Councilmember Seo, but I believe it was the previous calendar year, our firefighters voted to organize into a bargaining unit, which, as you know, in the history of the Celine Area Fire Department, there had never been a union representing the employees. So I think the changes that are reflected in that particular line item are a result of ongoing negotiations between management and union representation.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Girba?
Just real quick, looking at the total revenue showing on it, excuse me, on the one budget, represents $1,161,257, yet on the actual contribution, it says $1,197. Do you know what the difference is in that $30,000?
I'm going to venture to guess that it is the cost of fire runs that are billed on an individual basis.
Got it, got it. Thank you. I think that is right.
Additional questions? Any subsequent discussion? Then it's been properly moved by Girba, seconded by Dylan, to acknowledge, to approve, and to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Next is new business item 18-50. This is special assessment resolution for the Celine Area Fire Department. This will be a motion to approve and to adopt or not to approve Resolution Number One, Special Assessment for Fire Protection 2018, 2019, setting a public hearing on Monday, May 7, 2018, to hear and consider any objections to the city's proposed share for fire protection in the amount of $410,750 for fiscal years 2018, 2019.
Move to approve and adopt.
Second. Thank you, Mayor Protem Taha, and that was seconded by Mr. Girba. Any comment, Ms. Bennett? This is a routine thing that we do on an annual basis.
Yep. As the council may recall, we, the voters have allowed this special assessment to happen. We review it as we start the budget process, our budget process in April, and review what makes most sense, you know, whether we use the special assessment or the part of our operating mileage. In the past, we have continued to raise the funds using part of our operating mileage and not levy the special assessment, but we do adopt the resolutions to keep this option viable for future use.
Very good. Questions for Ms. Bennett? Any subsequent, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Taha.
Yes, thank you. Do you anticipate that the ongoing changes with personal property tax revenue changing might change the picture on what we decide to do about the special assessment?
It possibly could. I think at this point, there are still, is still a personal property base for the commercial that helps us reduce that amount, that would still allow us a viable option.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions for Treasurer Bennett? Any discussion on the motion? That's been properly moved and seconded to approve and to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Ms. Bennett, thank you very much. We move on to new business item 18-51, Engineering Services for Industrial Drive. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 13, 2018 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, and to approve and award or not to approve the Design, Construct, Professional Services Agreement for Industrial Drive to Spicer Group at a not-to-exceed amount of $84,570.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Moved by Girba to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dylan. Mr. Rubel, do you want to briefly go over your memo of March 13, before we open it up for questions?[1704.73]
Thank you, Mayor. We utilize a modified QBS process for engineering services. Actually, we use that similar process just for, also for the parking lot study, where you look at the qualifications, experience, similar projects, staffing, and cost. Those four categories then are evaluated and looked at in totality. We looked at the three lowest bids on this. They seem to have similar similarities also. But after a thorough investigation of the four categories, experience, work plan, prior experiences, and so forth, it became clear that Spicer Group was the preferred option.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Ruble. Are there questions for our City Superintendent Engineer? Mr. Girba.
Can you tell me what was the grading of this road? I'm just wondering how this got a priority in terms of, is it because the funding was available? Or is it because it's reached its failure point?
It's because it's on the Federal Aid Urban System, Gold Star Highway, and it's all-season category that it qualifies for these funds. We only have a select number of streets that qualify for federal aid funding. So you take what is at the time the worst, in the worst condition of your federal aid streets, and submit those and get point values. And so then Watts performs their evaluation, it goes to SEMCOG, and it goes up to Lansing, and it gets put in the STIP, which is the State Tip, Transportation Improvement Plan.
So if we were to compare South Ann Arbor Street to this street, would those funds be available for South Ann Arbor Street?
I was just talking to Mr. Ford, I spoke that today. We, we would have, except for the fact that they would not fund roads that have truck load limits put on them.
Okay.
And we could not get by that hurdle.
And the Woodland Drive towards the rec center as it goes out, I think that road's still.
I don't believe that's on the Gold Star Highway system.
Okay, so even because, even though we use it as a route for our industrial park and their trucks and everything, it's not eligible for that funding?
Yeah, it's also in the Act 425, so, you know, that's another consideration.
All right, thank you.
Additional questions? Ms. Dillon.
South Industrial, is that road going to have damage? Is it going to have construction equipment damage once they start building the hotel? Are they going to use that as an access from that side?
No, I mean, it would only have damage if there was oversized loads, which aren't allowed on basically any roads, except especially when there's load limits on in the winter time, and we haven't had that circumstance.
But are we going to put a brand-new road in before a major construction project?
No, this is a 2019 construction season.
Right.
Hotel is going to be built mostly this year.
Okay.
So it'll be, should be pretty well completed on all the heavy equipment side.
Now, my next question is, is MDOT going to be involved in this because it crosses over?
Well, MDOT's involved anyway because they manage the project.
Okay, is there an opportunity to have them do a study, a traffic study at the intersection?
It's not in the scope of work, and we aren't involving MDOT with intersection improvements. It would cost a lot more money. We would have to pay a lot more money of our share for the intersection improvements. I would need another $200,000 from the budget to do that.
But we wouldn't need improvements, we're talking about a traffic study.
Well, it doesn't require a traffic study for a federal aid project in our street work. We're not rebuilding the intersection.
I know, I'm asking that if MDOT's going to be on site, is it possible at that point to have? MDOT at one point had acknowledged that the lights at that intersection are not positioned correctly because of the topography, that when you're traveling on that road and there's a truck, you cannot see the overhead traffic light. And there was discussion as to moving those traffic lights to the side poles. Can we explore that again?
Well, it wouldn't be part of this project. I could talk to City Manager. There's probably proper channels to do that through. This is a construction project only outside the limits of the intersection.
Why don't you inquire with our contacts at MDOT whether that would be considered, and how we would go about advocating for that if there was consensus from, from the dais to explore, to explore that option? Perhaps Mr. Campbell can communicate that via his weekly communique.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Ruble, appreciate your time. There's a motion on the floor moved by Girba, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve and award or not to approve?
Move to approve and award.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mitchell, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. Discussion. Saying none. All those in favor of approving and awarding signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 18-52. This is 2018 Ford Interceptor. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 15th, 2018 memo from Police Chief Hart, and to approve or not to approve the purchase of a 2018 Ford Interceptor from Jorgensen Ford Sales in a not-to-exceed amount of $34,339.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilmember CO, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. Chief Hart, your memo of March 15th is pretty self-explanatory, but do you care to make any additional comments at this time?
I think it's a pretty straightforward proposal. This is what most police departments are migrating to, is a, it's basically the Explorer platform. It's the non-EcoBoost engine, and Ford will be doing most of the upfitting. So any concerns that have been expressed in the past over carbon monoxide poisoning, things of that nature with the Explorers should all be taken care of by selecting those two options.
Very good. Appreciate your work on this. Are there questions for Police Chief Hart? Mr. CO?
This is included in the budget, is it not, Chief?
Yes, sir, $37,000 was budgeted for that. So the remainder would be used to put the cages in the vehicle, because it is an SUV, it'll need two, and then also doing the graphics on the vehicle. The only thing it will end up doing here with Alex Linky is basically transferring the computer over from the current vehicle that will be deadlined, and then the camera system. Everything else should be taken care of.
Thank you, Chief.
Additional questions? Mr. Girba.
As you mentioned, transferring over the camera and the computer and whatever. How up to date are we on that equipment? Is that fairly current, or does that?
It's pretty current, and I've been working with Chris Schonk as well. There are some things, sometimes the computer mounts, the modems and things like that need to be replaced. But so far, we've been, knock on wood, we've been doing really good with the technology here, much better than my former agency.
Great, thank you.
Additional questions? Ms. Dillon.
Can you just remind us, in other communities, this is the normal realm to take cars out? Because when people see that this vehicle only has 100 and what, 12,000 miles on it that we're taking, you know, that we're replacing theoretically, is that the normal protocol in most departments?
Yes, when I first started in police work, almost 27 years ago, there was a 60,000 mile limit. A lot of agencies and municipalities use a mile kind of limit on there. Because keep in mind, these vehicles are mostly driven 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So there's a little extra wear and tear when they're trying to catch up. The officers are catching up to motorists, the, you know, RPMs are revving, they're a little bit harder on the vehicles. So by the time they're, they get over 100,000 miles, they're a little long in the tooth. So yeah, I would say most agencies are anywhere from 75 to 100,000, and then they deadline the vehicles.
And then I just have a couple other questions. On your invoice, what is a police engine idle feature? Is that something special?
Yeah, and I'm trying to remember exactly what it was on there, but it was definitely something that we wanted on there. To, I'm sorry, that feature will allow the vehicle to idle without the key in it. And if someone were to hop in the vehicle, so in the colder weather, to go back to Councilmember Girba's question, a lot of times, this colder weather is very hard on electronic equipment. So sometimes when you have no idle policies and it's 10 or 15 below zero, it can cause damage to the electronics. So the idle feature would allow the vehicle to stay idle, but if someone were to get in and try to drive it off without the key, the proper key, it would shut down. So it's kind of an anti-theft device as well.
Okay, and what about silent mode? It sounds really cool, and it's only $15. Somebody can I put that on my car?
That is to allow us to turn off the rear brake lights and taillights. So if we need to go into a situation completely dark, if we wanted to, so quote-unquote sneak up on somebody or go in silent or dark, that, that's that feature there.
My last question talks about lighting, actually, and I know you had mentioned in your memo about some new LEDs. The lights that we have on our vehicles right now, are they excessively bright?
Yes, I think one of the issues that we see with the LED technology is that it's, they're great during the daylight hours because of the increased visibility, but for our police officers that are working at night, even are motoring public, it's very hard on the eyes when you have those very bright flashes of LED lights. So there are some light bars that are in excess of $5,000 that allow the officer to kind of dial that down a little bit at night. We do not have that feature right now. So by going with the semi-mark configuration, the light bars are going to be up along the top of the windshield line and then in the back deck, and I'm hoping that's going to offer some increased officer safety and of course, some ease on the eyes for our public that's driving by a traffic stop or situation where they're illuminated.
Yeah, because I've noticed that, especially in the early morning hours when it's dark out, the cars should look purple, where the red and blue are combining. And it does sort of blind you in certain areas, so that's good to know. Well, thank you very much. You've answered my question.
Chief, I have just one question. Can you remind, so we are in the process of essentially converting from the Chevy Tahos to the Ford Explorer. Can you remind me which one of our Tahos has four-wheel drive?
Yes, and that is vehicle 122. That's a 2015 Chevy Tahoe, and it has about 41,000 miles on it right now.
Based on our current schedule, that car would be replaced or rotated out?
I would like to keep that one as, as long as possible. Right now, it's been mechanically sound, knock on wood, and it has not given us much trouble. So being a four-wheel drive vehicle, it's certainly, that's something that's desirable in the fleet, and the Explorers will of course be all-wheel drive.
Well, and the reason I bring that up is, several years ago, I think I was the one who advocated incurring the additional cost to get a four-wheel drive vehicle. I think that's important to have as a component in our fleet, and it's good not only for our officers' safety in inclement weather, especially when there's snow, but it's also good for our public safety. So I guess for the record, if it comes time to rotate that vehicle out, I would advocate replacing it with another four-wheel drive vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Are there additional questions or comments for the chief? Chief Hart, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there's no discussion on this motion, it's been properly moved by CO, seconded by Mitchell, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 18-53, Recommendation for Downtown Parking Study. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 14th, 2018 memo from City Manager Campbell, and to approve and award or not to approve the Downtown Parking Study to Rich &amp; Associates Parking Consultants for an amount not to exceed $8,500, and to authorize or not authorize the City Manager to sign the agreement upon review and approval of the agreement by the City Attorney.
Move to acknowledge?
Moved by Dillon to acknowledge, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by McClellan. Before I get to the City Manager, I would note, and I think Jill Durnan made reference to this during her public comments, but there is a letter from Celine Main Street in support of this study dated March 19th, and a hard copy was provided to each of you in advance of tonight's meeting. Mr. Campbell, do you want to briefly comment on your memo of March 14th before we open it up for questions?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the, per the City Council's strategic plan, staff issued a RFP a couple months ago for a downtown traffic study. We sent the, we sent out to six, it was publicly advertised, but also specifically sent to six firms that do this. We received three back, Walker Consultants, Carl Walker, and Rich &amp; Associates. We had our, our staff review team, which also included Ms. Andrews from, from Main Street. And so we went through them, and then we thought it'd be best to bring them in for face-to-face or one-on-one interviews, which we did, brought all three of the firms in. So certainly, all three are very good, solid firms, and could do the, could certainly do the study. As you can see, there's quite a disparity here between the low bid and the high bid. So Rich &amp; Associates in the low bid of $8,500, Carl Walker $33,000, and Walker Consultants $25,900. As we, we did some very thorough investigations, asking for some of their reports that they've done for other similar communities with similar scopes, also doing background reference to the communities that they've done similar size as well as larger. And so we felt, based on the information that we received, that, that Rich &amp; Associates would be the one, one to use. So do our best to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Are there questions from the dais? Ms. Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Campbell, I, I appreciate this presentation. I felt like it was very professionally written, and I, I just want to point out, so I, I'm looking at page two on their packet. It's the page entitled Introduction, and they talk about having a city-formed steering committee. And I, I just wanted to highlight that as part of the overall study, and the fact that Rich &amp; Associates has talked about building consensus and doing some community engagement. I don't know if that was initially clear, but do you have a plan in place at this point for the city-formed steering, I'm assuming, it says city-formed, I'm assuming that's you? Is that right, or?
So, and I apologize, I was remiss. Mr. Dave Burr from Rich &amp; Associates is here as well, so Dave, if you wouldn't mind coming up and kind of walk through, respond to that, that question, please.
Sure, we're welcome, you're here this evening. I apologize that I didn't recognize you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Mr. Campbell, good evening. The city-formed steering committee, what we normally recommend is, at the inception of the study, we issue what we call a goal list, and that is a list of individuals that should be contacted, and we seek out those for individual meetings. But what we also recommend is there's a community group, and whether that is members of city staff, members of the downtown business community, downtown residents, so that those are the folks that we are actually working through, getting information, if we have questions, giving us direction of the folks that we want to contact, and giving us feedback on interim process. One of the issues of this study that was in the RFP was that there was a lot of communication for the city. What we want to make sure that the issues that are important to Celine are the ones that we are actually getting. You've done some studies in the past. The last formal study that was done by another firm was in 2002, and there's been some things by the community. So we want to understand what have been the results of those, what is working, what isn't working? How is all this going to work together? We can only get that through working with the community.
Please.
And just two other questions. So the, the start date was, was discussed is April 16th, and I, I'm concerned about the fact that we do have a new restaurant that might be opening. I don't know if that's going to skew our results, or it would be, oh, this is the heaviest parking burden ever, because this restaurant already has a presence in our county, it's, it's very popular, a lot of citizens are looking forward to it. So I'm just concerned about, about that timeline.
Well, the, the April 16 timeline was one of the, in the RFP as a start date. In our interview, we actually indicated, although there are certain elements that we can do in terms of some of the other front-end work that we would do in terms of scheduling some of these other interim meetings, one element of the study that is, is involved is what we call a turnover and occupancy study, where staff, we actually go through, and we, all the on-street, public and private, and off-street lots, we actually go through those hourly, and we record the parking in the on-street spaces, we record, you know, are those folks, how, are they staying within the defined time limits? And we actually indicated during the proposal that Smokehouse wasn't going to open, I think at the time, April 9th. And we suggested, we probably want to go, delay that aspect of the study several weeks after that, so that they were fully up and running, they had the bugs worked out, and we were giving a good representation.
I appreciate that. And then my, my final question, I was somebody who questioned the need for a parking study, and our staff forwarded me the 2002 study, and I thought, oh, okay, I understand it because our business mix is very different now, we have so many restaurants. So the hours that you're doing this inventory, is it going to extend into like the nine o'clock, 10 o'clock range to capture that specific business model?
It really, it really would, yes. We would, we would, in our initial discussions with the city, we would, you know, what time those will start and what time do we need to end to. There are some communities, we just did a study last year in Hudson, Ohio, or in Hudson, Wisconsin, excuse me, that had a number of restaurants, and they're downtown, although they're busy during the day, it was during the evening that we found the maximum demand. So we would do the same thing here.
Thank you, I have no more questions.
Very good, thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
I'm just gonna, I've got a couple questions here and there, I think that some have been addressed by Ms. Mitchell with the steering committee. Also on page two, Task 3A, there's a parking supply inventory. Hasn't that already been done? Are we providing any of the information that we've previously acquired to them? Or are they just reinventing and doing their own studies?
No, as part of the RFP that we sent out to actually all six, included that information that you're, if, I'm assuming you're referring to the Main Street information?
Yeah.
Right, so they didn't do an inclusive, so that's what these folks will do. I mean, there's some, some private lots as well, but yes, they have, they will certainly utilize that and refer to that. But certainly, especially to, to Ms. Mitchell's point of the Smokehouse 52 and the, what the expectations are, certainly, I think it's going to be well worth, or the need is going to be there to redo that. But, but those numbers are part of that, and certainly will be used as they look at all the different information for the study. But, but those numbers are part of that, and certainly will be used as they, they look at all the, the different information for the study.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see. There's, there's just a couple of wording things that I was trying to figure out. On task five, page three, review the data analysis as well as available alternatives. So, are you going to give a recommendation and then, like, your, your top recommendation and then alternatives to that? Is that what I'm reading here? I'm on page three, task five.
Task five. Yes. What we, what, the, the process that we go through is, we would come in, we would collect the, the land use inventory, the park inventory, the turnover and occupancy data. We take that back, and we, we analyze that. What we then normally recommend is, once we have that information collected, we come back again for a second meeting with the city-formed steering committee, and, and we all, we also recommend generally a, a public meeting. And this is then the results of the analysis, before we've done recommendations. But it's having the numbers in front of us to say, okay, here's what the, here's what the numbers are showing us. Here are some possible solutions, and let's start a discussion of what is going to be most appropriate. Once we have that information and we have that feedback, then we can start prioritizing those things and, and applying a cost to what there's, there are going to be in a timeline that they may need to be implemented.
Okay. I guess what it segues into is, in your initial letter, and then it was also, I think, mentioned another place in your proposal, there's, there's extensive discussion about parking structures. And in reading it, it almost seems like that was a coached reply from you, that it was, you were being encouraged to consider parking structures.
No. No. One of the things in the RFP was perhaps to consider a parking structure. One of the reasons that our fee is so much less, and I can only presume that perhaps my competitors were already looking, that a parking structure is a foregone conclusion, and they're looking at the design of that. In a smaller community, and we do, we've done this in a number of communities, parking structures are not cheap buildings. I mean, I talked to one of my architects today, and you're looking at, at about fifteen thousand dollars of space construction cost. And if you were to put that on an existing lot, those spaces, if, even if you were to call tabletop, which is a second level, you're paying for the existing, plus fifteen thousand for those new spaces. So, you're, you're, you're paying quite a lot of money for those. So, our feeling is, is let's look at the parking needs as they exist today, how they're going to exist in the future, and look at what solutions do we have before we get to that parking structure. If that is something that, down the road, that is the, the best solution, then, then so be it. But that is, that's not even on our radar.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. The, my last question discusses, I believe it's, it's on page two, but it's on page two of a different section. So, I apologize. And I'll just, it talks about, there's a very defined area. There's actually even a map included. Is there a reason why you're not looking beyond what we kind of call the four corners of the city? Do we not have any intention of expanding our downtown, so exploring any other options of parking beyond the immediate four corners?
Well, the, 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 the four blocks are really the area that we look at the demand. We typically look at, we go beyond that in terms of possible supply, because what you may happen, depending on what the, the recommendations are in terms of control, you, you were looking at what available supply do you have on-street? And is that going to impact the residents in the surrounding neighborhoods? So, those are the kinds of things that may have to be addressed in some form or fashion. But we, we have the, the four blocks as our demand area, and then we go beyond that, probably another half a block in each direction for the supply.
Because it says that it will not exceed the four blocks. So, I just want to, so will you look at the big picture, even though it's not theoretically being considered?
That, again, that would be, that would probably be subject to discussion with the steering committee. Once we have the, the demand within the, the defined area, and looking at what other solutions, what other impact there might be down the road. But our demand is focused within these four areas, and our supply just, just outside those boundaries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Additional questions for our guest? Ms. McClellan?
I don't know if this was answered in Ms. Mitchell's question, but what happens if the Smoke Fifty-two doesn't open at the predicted time? Are we going to have a pushback on that April sixteenth date for, for that part of the study? Or, I'm just wondering, is that a hard date? I know we've had so, so many pushbacks on the date of opening for that, that are we pretty sure that that's what's going to be here?
Well, I, I'll tell you on the tenth.
Okay.
But, but no, it's, it's a good question, and that, you may recall me, that, we had, we had talked about this when Main Street did their inventory study. We had, they had kind of pushed it back and kept pushing it back because we're trying to wait on that. So, again, I, I'm confident, but, but certainly, I, you know, I don't know, there's nothing guaranteed ten seconds from now then. So, we can do our best. But, but again, to Ms. Mitchell's point, I mean, yeah, we, we agree. And so, while that, that, you know, that's in the RFP, but, but we discussed that specifically during the, the one-on-one interviews. And, and they agreed that, hey, you know, we should, and there's a recommendation, we should push that. And we, we agreed, I mean, we thought it's very logical that we should wait until they're up and running a little while. But yeah, I mean, if, if, if they don't, then, then we're going to have to make those considerations. And, and at some point, heaven forbid if they weren't to open up, which I don't believe that's the case, but if, then we, we would have to move forward at some point.
Nope. Thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Gearbock?
Just a couple. When you, during your analysis, how will you, you'll be breaking out all the types of different tenants that will be in the buildings uptown? Not only do we have employees, but we also have potential residential tenants that'll be there, that'll have to have parking twenty-four hours or some of that kind of stuff. So, that will be part of the review?
Yes. Yes. It's part of our land use inventory.
The other thing, and one of the things that we keep potentially running into, is the problem of employees parking in the most prominent spaces right next to the building. So, when you do your analysis, are you going to be recording the cars and their license plates as where they're parking as part of the study? Can that be as part of it?
Yeah. One, one of the things is that, as I mentioned, one of, one of the elements of this is what we call a turnover and occupancy study. And those are, those spaces are generally the spaces that are time-limited to, to two hours or less, where we record. We don't record the whole license plate because we're trying to get through. We may be able to do that here because you are such a small, compact area. But we do record the license plate information so that when we come by again, we can see, is that car still there? Or has that moved, or is that space empty, and those kinds of things. So, we can, we, we do track that information. One of the things that we look at is what is the violation rate on each block, and we report that to you. And we, in, in other communities, it depends on, I mean, employees, they, they know all the games. And so, you know, we're looking, you know, and unfortunately, that's one of the things you have to do. You have to, what, and it would be in the recommendations, what we need for the system to work for everyone.
Right. Great. And the other one was being, I am really concerned about making sure that, and I do like the idea of having that preliminary meeting before you draft a final report or any of that nature, because I want to make sure that we get the most raw, raw information available to the public and to this council, not to have it sifted through in terms of coordinating and trying to clarify things. And then the other part of it is making sure the stakeholders are a mixed variety, not one large property owner downtown or some individual that may not have the best interests that are for the entire block of the city.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I'll keep my other comments for later. Thank you.
Additional questions? Then there's a motion on the floor moved by Dylan, seconded by, I believe it was McClellan, to acknowledge receipt of the memo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. How about a motion now to approve an award or not to approve and to authorize or not authorize?
Move to approve an award and authorize?
Thank you, Councilwoman McClellan, seconded by Councilmember CO. Discussion. Mr. Gearbock?
With having over twenty years or more of experience on council and having seen a number of parking studies and other recommendations, I'm really struggling with trying to approve yet another parking study, because we do them, we don't implement them. Or we do do them, and they end up being done differently because somebody else has a different approach to it. I'm looking at this one from the perspective that you are not doing the parking structure, because I've been very adamant that we cannot afford to do a parking structure, not in this kind of tax base or not of type of city that we have at this point. So, that's the only thing that is convincing me that we would move forward with this parking structure study. And part of the other thing is I need to understand the information regarding the tenant parking. I am concerned with the potential of apartments going downtown, where we will not have sufficient parking for the individuals that are really the customers and things coming into town that drive the benefit of our customers and our businesses. And the other aspect is I need to know how, and hopefully, that you'll be able to reconfigure some of our parking lots that may be able to squeeze out some more spaces. There have been designs in the past that should have been implemented, but were not implemented. And as a result, we've lost significant parking spots. So, from this perspective, I just want to stress that too.
I have some very talented designers in our office, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional discussion? Well, let me, let me say a few things. First, I, I want to acknowledge for the public record the work that Celine Main Street has done on this issue, specifically our former director Riley Hollenbach and Wally McNeil, the proprietor of, of Max Acadian Seafood Shack. I think the meeting that we had this past summer or spring, or maybe it was even fall, my, my recollection is a bit hazy sometimes. My apologies. I thought there were some really interesting, solid insights and recommendations there. And it's true, there have been parking analyses done in the past. As our, our guest indicated, the most recent one was done in two thousand and two. And I, I reviewed that recently, and there are some interesting observations, and I think some good recommendations. But the reality is, I don't think it's appropriate or prudent to make policy decisions based on a document that is more than fifteen years old. So, I look forward to this. I know that staff working with Celine Main Street and some other stakeholders really took their time to, to vet and evaluate the proposals that we receive. I look forward to reviewing your results. And as I've said many times publicly and from this dais, and I've, I've used this terminology ad nauseam, I think it's really critical to make data-driven decisions, and to take the time to collect the data and to evaluate the, the statistics and information before you make a, a policy decision, especially a policy decision that may have a pretty profound impact on our downtown. And our downtown right now is on a really good trajectory of becoming more vibrant, more attractive. But this is, this is a, a critical issue that must be addressed. So, I'm strongly in, in favor of, of the motion and appreciate your time here this evening.
Thank you very much, council.
Additional discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by McClellan, seconded by CO, to approve an award and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Look forward to working with you, and I know we'll be talking about this issue more in the coming months. Thank you. Have a good evening. Last two action items of the evening are, Mr. Fordice, she'll be taking the lead on these. First up is eighteen dash fifty-four, road salt purchase for twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen winter season. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March fourteenth, twenty-eighteen memo from DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the purchase of road salt through the Michigan State M-Deal Program for twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen winter season at a not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand.
To acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbock, is seconded, seconded by Councilmember CO. Your memo's pretty self-explanatory. Do you care to make any additional comments?
Just want to comment on the, the difference in this request versus last year's request. Last year, we had a fair amount of leftover salt from the previous winter that allowed us for this winter that's just ending right now to purchase quite a bit less salt. And additionally, we intentionally cut it close, because we have some maintenance we need to do on the salt barn, and it's very difficult to do when it's full of salt. So, we have hit that target. We are almost out of salt, and we'll be able to do that maintenance. But that also means we need a significant amount for next year.
Makes sense. Questions for our DPW Director? No? Discussion on the motion. We'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gearbock, seconded by CO, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item eighteen dash fifty-five, FY eighteen water supply budget amendment. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March fifteenth, twenty, twenty oh eighteen memo from DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve an amendment to the twenty-eighteen water budget in the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred dollars for electronic water meter reading equipment and water meters.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mitchell. Do you care to second that, Mr. CO?
I would.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Fordice, your memo of March the fifteenth was pretty self-explanatory. Do you care to make any additional comments?
Again, just that we've, we've certainly gotten our, our money's worth out of the equipment that we're proposing to replace here.
Very good. Questions for our DPW Director? Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Fordice. I, I guess I want to make sure, is, is this new equipment you're proposing, is it going to be part of kind of a, a new trend? Is it going to be part of, these are the, compatible with the systems that we have used? And how long is, is this purcha, purchase going to be relevant for the department?
This purchase will allow us for the foreseeable future to continue operations the way we're doing them right now, and have been for decades. When our, one of our handheld units failed last year, we took that as an opportunity to, to look into other meter, meter reading technologies. And we studied two of them fairly closely. They take a long time to implement. So, one of them, you know, had some implementation costs, but it also had a high risk. The future costs were hard to predict in that one, so we didn't, we didn't like that one. There's another method called fixed base meter reading, which basically, all of the meters would be read via radio, basically at the push of a button. But there's a fair amount of infrastructure that goes into a system like that. So, we're slowly proceeding with topography studies to see how many reading locations we would need to service this community, and then, you know, look into the cost and see if there's a way we could implement that in phases. That's, you know, I think the initial back-of-the-napkin estimate was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to get everything in, in place for that. The upside of that is that instead of sending four guys out into the community for four or five days, we just push a button. So, there's a significant labor savings with those types. But again, a big upfront, upfront cost that we're not ready to implement at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions for our DPW Director? Mayor Pretend Tar, did you have any?
Ms. Mitchell asked my question. Thank you.
Well, very good. Questions? Mr. Gearbock?
Bringing that subject that you just mentioned, when will we have the ability to get that in place? Because if we're talking four individuals, we could do significant savings and payback on that.
Yeah. The, the labor savings is significant, because we do, you know, we read these four times a year. So, you know, let's say, you know, roughly, we'll get sixteen weeks of, of labor savings per year. So, there's, there's still a lot of details to look into that. We are working with our vendor to make our, the meters we're installing currently and for the past year have been compatible with this new system. The meters that we've been installing for the past fifteen years are compatible with a small upgrade. So, those are some of the issues that we're looking at. We basically, we have to go out and touch every single meter in the city to implement this program, and then build receiving stations. So, it's, it's, it's an ongoing process that we're, we're looking into that and trying to.
The new equipment will allow you for a five- or six-year phase-in if we end up starting doing it?
Easily. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Additional questions? We'll proceed to vote on the motion. If there's no discussion. It's been properly moved by Mitchell, seconded by CO, to acknowledge receipt, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Fordice. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is Commission Committee and Task Force Reports from Councilmembers. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Historic District Commission met this past week. We are continuing to see an uptick in the number of applications. I'm happy to say that the commission is taking a more proactive approach to educating homeowners rather than have them, you know, get quotes and then find out that there are restrictions on what they can do. And I believe we are getting a good start on forming a committee for the expansion of the historic districts, which has been on my, my Santa list for a long time. So, I'm happy to report that progress.
Very good. Thank you very much. Additional committee, commissioner, task force reports. About reports or other announcements? Ms. McClellan, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to make council and the public aware that the Student Art Banner competition flyers will be going home hopefully this week. And the theme for this year, it's open from, for K through twelfth grade, but the theme for this year is celebrate Celine. So, celebrating anything from events to people and. this year is celebrate Celine, so celebrating anything from events to people and places around town. So I'm looking forward to see the submissions that come through this year. And we will be doing the judging of those sometime in April, and then the banners will go up hopefully after, well, definitely after spring break, but hopefully before Taste of Celine.
Terrific. It's a wonderful program, and young people really enjoy it.
That's fun.
Thank you for your work on that. Additional reports or announcements? Well, then, we'll proceed to a wastewater treatment update. Mr. Skoll, thank you for bearing with us this evening.
We recently had the pre-bid meeting for the odor abatement. We had a pretty good turnout. We're predicting four or five bids, but we won't know that until they come in on April 3rd. The bids, the start date is still at the end of June. The NOVA filters are up and running. And, but the, the updates to the bearings and the wash arms have been pushed back till the first week of April. It's really all I have.
And you did, my understanding, because I saw two emails, and I'll forward one to you, because I'm not sure you received it, there were a few odor complaints over the weekend? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
But that, that's been it. We, we can adjust some more of the peroxide dose, but that takes time, because of the detention time in the plant is fairly long with low flows.
Okay. But it appears that the chemicals that you're injecting into the system have had some positive impact, which is good. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Skoll. Other questions for our wastewater treatment superintendent, Mr. CEO?
Yes, it's on a totally separate subject, though, Mr. Mayor. It pertains to what we discussed earlier about the, the solid waste and the disposal plans within the county. It occurred to me, while we were going through that, they were talking about different waste streams, you know, recyclables, compostables, the amount that actually goes into our dumps. It occurred to me that there's another place that things can be disposed of, and that's the garbage disposal in our sink. Is there any way to quantify how much your plant receives through that?
I don't know how you'd even go about measuring that, because you have to be looking for something very specific, you know? I really don't know how that. I would always recommend you throw it in your trash or your compost pile preferably, then just put it down the drain, just anything that it may.
But it occurs to me that, at least for my generation, we grew up with this garbage disposal was a modern, new convenience, and everybody saw as a, as a new solution to disposing of garbage. Down the disposal, away it goes, keep the water running for a couple extra minutes, and it's gone.
Yeah, it is convenient, but it doesn't, it's dead without its own.
I understand, but I, I mean, there's probably a lot of people who raised, and at the same time I was, who still have that philosophy. And a lot of this is a change, an educational effort to get people to break away from old habits and form new ones. And I guess, but there's really no way to identify how much a waste stream ends up down the garbage disposal. Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Skoll? Bob, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. We come now to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
I know you took off the food vending portion of the agenda, but I was wondering, how many are allowed? I noticed that the vendors, like with the VFW, or Squanis, or high school, would not be charged. But how many are going to be allowed? It does not have, you know, you could end up with four from service areas or churches, and then another two or three that would like to come in privately. And so that, and also, the thing that I still would like, when it comes to the taxpayers, how are the residential tenants going to be paying for their parking places? Final thing, there's been a lot of talk about handicap parking, and I was wondering, the Speedway handicap parking is unenforceable. They are parking in front of the dumpster, which you're not supposed to park in front of, and the employees were parking there, and the police department went over to enforce it, and they said, there's nothing we can do, because it's not even a proper handicap parking space. Thank you for your kindness.
Thank you, Mrs. Heson. I'm happy to get with you afterwards and discuss some of those matters, or direct you to the appropriate staff members, but we appreciate your time. Please.
John Olson, Saline Area Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to remind everyone that this Friday, the Chamber will host the 29th Annual Celine Salutes, which will honor our outstanding citizens. Our Citizen of the Year is Rebecca Schneider. Our Lifetime Achievement is Mary Lindquist. Orrin Parsons, Distinguished Veteran, is Paul Schwimmer. First Responder is Celine firefighter Kurt Schneider. Our Hometown Hero, active duty, is Major John Sheridan. And our Youth of the Year is Melinda McCabe. And then the following, that'll be this Friday, we'll be doing it at the, the Old Hospital in conjunction with Evangelical Homes. And next Saturday, the following Saturday, will be Extravaganza. We're going to back-to-back it two weekends. And that will, will have five trails throughout the community, and they'll all start at Bush's, and the Easter Bunny will be making his way all around town, so we hope everybody will come out for that also.
Very good. Thanks, John. Two excellent events. Hopefully, you'll have a good public participation at both. And then I would note, for whomever served on the Selection Committee for Celine Salutes, those are excellent choices. Very, very solid. Look forward to recognizing them and celebrating their achievements this Friday. Any other citizen comments? Any other business, actually, I have one thing to bring before City Council this evening, and I ask that you take out your calendars, if you have them handy. As the agenda notes, the initial budget presentation will be made at our next regular council meeting on April 2nd, beginning at 6:00 PM. The follow-up budget presentation with the big three, including the Police Chief, DPW Director, and Parks and Rec Director, will be on April 16th. It's my understanding that we will be receiving a balanced budget from staff. I'm also cognizant of the fact that in the past, the budget process has kind of dragged on a little bit, and I think having more focused, cohesive discussions is, is beneficial. So what I'd like to suggest, if a majority are available, is that we would schedule a final meeting the subsequent Monday, which would be April 23rd, and hopefully wrap up the budget process. In the event that we were unable to do so on the 23rd, that would still leave us one last Monday in the month of April, if there were any outstanding issues or concerns. Is, who is available on April 23rd? Let's say 6:30. You would be available, Ms. McClellan?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
I'm just looking.
Mr. Gierbaugh, would you be available?
Yeah, I'm more concerned about not having a strategic plan in place before we do the budget.
I know that staff is working expeditiously to get that, that final meeting scheduled. Ms. McClellan, or Ms. Mitchell?
Can you come back to me after?
Yep, let me come back to you.
I want to check one more thing.
Ms. Tahar?
Yes, 23rd is okay.
Okay. Ms. Dylan?
I would prefer the 30th.
Okay. Mr. CEO?
I'm available on the 23rd.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell?
Either date is good for me.
Okay, let's say the 23rd, then, at 6:30, which leaves us the option of the 30th, if there are still some outstanding issues. Okay? And if you have some concerns you'd like to talk to me about after the meeting, Ms. Dylan, I'd be happy to, to hear your, your questions or concerns. All right, I think we're good there. Anything else to come before Celine City Council this evening?
Can we consider the 30th? Is everybody available on the 30th?
I would prefer, I would prefer the next week, myself, but how do people feel about the 30th?
Either day's fine with me.
I'm available.
Available?
With the strategic information available at that point?
Do you want to comment on the strategic plan?
Sure. So since everybody has their calendars out, how is the 12th of April? So a 6:00 or 6:30 meeting?
Saturday?
April 12th.
Oh, sorry.
Thursday.
Thursday. What time?
6:00 or 6:30? Start at 10?
I'd say 6:30. All right, let's plan on that. Let's jump back to the budget. The reason for recommending the 23rd is, well, my hope was that we could wrap up the budget at that time. If not, then we would have the 30th as a fallback. If we wait till the 30th, then we're pushing it into May to finalize the budget if we are not able to come to consensus on the 30th. But the Chair will obviously do whatever a majority of council would like to do. Any preference, Mr. CEO?
I agree with you, the 23rd and 30th would work best, but obviously, that's going to leave Ms. Dylan out, I think, for the one meeting.
You were, you were not able to attend on the 23rd?